Now, we have two witnesses for this panel. Ontario Nature and Evolution Mining. I'm going to ask Ontario Nature to start their testimony. Please mention your name before you start.
Good afternoon. My name is Tony Morris, and I am the Conservation Policy and Campaigns Director at Ontario Nature. Established in 1931, Ontario Nature is a conservation charity with a mission to protect wild species and wild spaces. We represent over 30,000 individual members and supporters, and 150 member groups from across the province that form our nature network. Ontario Nature and our network have significant concerns with Bill Five. I'll briefly go over our main concerns. We outlined a more detailed overview of our concerns through the relevant environmental registry postings and materials provided to committee. In terms of the proposed changes to the Endangered Species Act, redefining habitat to just immediate dwellings ignores science. Picture your own home. Your bedroom is protected, but your kitchen, living room, bathroom could be bulldozed at any time. How would you survive? This absurdly narrow definition will put our most vulnerable species at further risk. Eliminating recovery strategies and the concept of recovery makes it impossible to assess, mitigate, and avoid harm to species. By giving up on recovery as a key feature of endangered species legislation, this bill makes species extirpation or extinction acceptable. But think of an ecosystem like a Jenga tower. One piece of that tower, a single species, may seem insignificant, but if you keep removing pieces, eventually the tower becomes unstable and collapses. When that happens, we too will be buried under the rubble. I'd like to read you a quote from one of our youth council members, which is part of our written submission. "As youth who care for Mother Earth, we envision a life filled with health and well-being where our natural environment remains preserved. It is essential for us to have access to food security, clean air, water, and land, all of which depend on the vital species and habitats that Bill Five attempts to destroy." The proposal to remove environmental assessment requirements for the Eagle Nest Mine undermines public trust, infringes on Indigenous rights, and puts our environment at risk. Mining projects require a social license to operate successfully. Without trust, transparency, and appropriate mitigation measures, that license is unattainable. The same goes for the proposal to remove the EA requirements for the York One Waste Disposal Site. As recently as June 2024, the ministry required a comprehensive EA due to public concern. The about-face in Bill Five provides no evidence of why this action is necessary or why this particular landfill should be exempt. Yet, we've learned from reporting by the Trillium that the owners of this landfill have donated over $200,000 to the progressive conservatives since 2018. We object to the amendments to the purpose of the Mining Act, which remove reference to upholding Indigenous rights and minimizing the effects of mineral extraction on public health, safety, and the environment. The proposal for special economic zones disregards Indigenous rights, sound environmental planning, and the concerns of local communities. There are no details on how trusted proponents will be determined or evaluated, while creating exemptions from any and potentially all provincial and municipal laws. What's to stop the government from declaring a special economic zone in the Greenbelt or Algonquin Provincial Park? Schedule Nine does not respect the rule of law and puts the health of Ontarians and our precious natural areas in jeopardy. I now want to turn to some of the justification being used for this bill. We are in the midst of interrelated biodiversity and climate crises. This is not up for debate; it is scientific fact. Doubling down on economic paradigms that created these problems while simultaneously undermining democracy, Indigenous rights, and transparent governance doesn't address these crises. We need economic solutions that operate in harmony with nature, not in conflict. This means solutions informed by Indigenous knowledge and science. It means collaboration and stronger standards, not erase to the bottom. It means investing in the right sort of projects by good corporate actors, not handpicked proponents encouraging weakened standards. In recent polling from April, 89% of Canadians identified nature as a key element of what it means to be Canadian. Higher than hockey, universal healthcare, and our flag. Nature is prominent on our money, part of our mythos, and a symbol of being Canadian. The maple leaf is the center of our flag. Why does this matter? The premise for Bill Five is to defend our economy from American threats with rhetoric tied to protecting our sovereignty. You don't defend Canadian sovereignty by taking a chainsaw to our national identity. Environmental protections, public consultation, and Indigenous rights are not red tape. To be clear, we support economic development. We are simply opposed to sacrificing vulnerable species, transparent governance, and Indigenous rights on the flawed premise that it is necessary to address economic uncertainty. Instead, we encourage the government to present an economic vision and strategy that strengthens our social safety net, environmental safeguards, and supports Indigenous reconciliation. The government should responsibly use our natural resources to ensure a sustainable economy for future generations. Polling of Ontarians from May 2024 showed that 88% agree that the province should invest in the protection, restoration, and sustainable use of biodiversity. Instead, Ontario has become an environmental laggard as compared with other provinces. As of this morning, over 18,000 Ontarians have written to the premier using Ontario Nature's Action Alert opposing Bill Five. This number does not account for the numerous other organizations with similar petitions. Bill Five represents an attack on the very foundation of Canadian identity and priorities of Ontarians. It must be withdrawn. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all this afternoon.
Thank you. We move to Evolution Mining. Please state your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Jay Allen. I'm the Sustainability Manager with Evolution Mining Red Lake Operations. So Evolution Mining is a global mining company. We have one asset here in Canada, Red Lake Operations, of course, in the Red Lake District of Ontario here. Red Lake Operations is one of the longest operating gold mines in Canada. We have been operating for over 80-plus years in that area and have had a very long and colored history, in a good way, operating in that jurisdiction and with our local First Nation partners. I'm here to voice Evolution's support for Bill Five, for its core objectives, especially the urgent need to expedite permitting timelines and establish a more efficient one-window-one-authorization process for responsible resource development. Our own ongoing lengthy experience with permitting, even for projects expanding and improving our environmental performance, underscore the importance of the changes of the proposed bill. We believe that these key elements are essential to enhancing Ontario's economic competitiveness and realizing the full potential of its mineral resources. For Evolution specifically, a predictable and timely permitting framework is fundamental to unlocking crucial investments, and the proposed streamlining offers a much-needed pathway to progress. The one-window-one-authorization process represents a significant opportunity to reduce administrative ballnecks which currently exist and accelerate project delivery while upholding rigorous environmental and social assessments, thereby strengthening Ontario's attractiveness for investment and job creation. Evolution Mining Red Lake Operations continues to submit permit authorizations for anything from regular permit renewal applications for project development on a yearly basis, and we have forward-looking, multiple years, in fact, usually up to 10 years in advance, to identify what the operational needs of the mine will be and to make sure that we have identified the proper processes and required timeframes to allow authorizations for continued operations. That is including continued partnership, as I mentioned, with our local First Nations. Currently, Evolution Red Lake Operation is undergoing a proposal extension of an existing tailings facility so that we actually may progress an old historical tailings facility into a closure state and work on rehabilitation. This project has been in the permit authorization process for multiple years and continues to draw out with unfortunate without a clearly defined end date on when some of the authorizations will be achieved. We are absolutely dedicated to collaborating with the Government of Ontario, with local First Nation partners, to ensure Bill Five effectively accelerates responsible development through a more streamlined permitting system, balancing economic growth with our commitments to our First Nations partners and environmental stewardship. Given Canada's concerning slide in global permitting efficiency, we support Bill Five as a vital step to ensure that obtaining a necessary permit does not take years, a delay that hinders progress without any apparent environmental or community benefit. This also detracts further investment from companies such as Evolution into further expansions or acquisitions within Ontario due to its current permitting state and the uncertainties that come with that. But with this, we are optimistic about the positive impact on the Protect Ontario by unleashing our Economy Act 2025 on the resource sector and reaffirm our commitment to sustainable and responsible mining practices in Ontario. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for both presenters. We will move now to the first round of the question and answer, and we will start this time with the government side. MPP Vickers.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to our two speakers on your presentations. My first question's to Tony. In our bid to become more environmentally friendly, produce less carbon, to damage the earth less and less all the time, do you feel that it's better to buy those critical minerals that help us get us there from foreign countries that don't have any environmental laws at all or any children labor laws of any kind? Or do you feel it'd be better to try and make a program that would work here in Ontario that does have some of those environmental and labor laws?
I can't speak to other countries, but I would argue that Bill Five weakens environmental standards in Ontario, and we don't...
But if we don't buy from our own country that have those laws, we have to buy from countries that we have no control over at all.
And I would argue our competitive advantage is being a country that has higher standards. So we don't become competitive on a global marketplace by doing a race to the bottom and lowering our standards to compete with countries that have poor human rights records and environmental standards. And I would argue that upholding Indigenous rights is a competitive advantage.
Thank you, and I have a further question. This one's to Jay in Evolution Mining. Can you please explain in your own interpretation how Bill Five will streamline regulatory processes while still maintaining a high standard of safety and environmental protections?
Absolutely, thank you. For Evolution Red Lake Operations, as mentioned, we have a very long and historic relationship with our local Indigenous First Nations. There's nothing that's going to change that for us. In fact, we are right about to re-sign a new collaboration agreement in the coming weeks with those First Nations that has been in development for multiple years. It is not to erode our engagement and our consultation with First Nation partnerships, but instead is meant to where the benefit would be for us would be to centralize that process. So rather than having that consultation process split amongst multiple departments to obtain multiple authorizations and meeting the consultation duties, by bringing that together, it would streamline not just the approval process, but honestly, it would improve upon that consultation process for us and our First Nations as we are not duplicating those consultations that are happening just because we're working with one ministry office versus another and then another, and it is duplicating all of that work right now. So bringing this process into place would actually bring all of those parties together to have a more meaningful consultation.
Thank you.
MPP Galagor.
Thank you, Chair, and through you, to the presenters. Thank you for being here today. My first question goes to Mr. Morris from Ontario Nature. I noted in your deputation, you talked about sustaining our economy for future years, specifically investing in biodiversity. Now, the proposed legislation includes a significant increase in funding for species conservation efforts, and since 2018, in fact, our government has funded 215 projects through the Species at Risk Stewardship Program, and these projects have collectively restored over 44,500 acres of habitat for species. So having said this, Bill Five quadruples our government's direct investments in species recovery to 20 million annually. So talking about investment in biodiversity, would your organization not agree that this substantial increase in and on-the-ground conservation work to benefit species at risk will have tangible benefits for species at risk?
Any investment in nature is a worthwhile investment, but I would argue this investment is insignificant given the scale of the crisis, and you can't at the same time be claiming to quadruple investments while at the same time allowing habitat to be destroyed at a larger scale, which is what the proposal for the Species Conservation Act would do.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Given my amount of time, I would like to move to the question for Mr. Allen from Evolution Mining. And Mr. Allen, you made mention in your deputation about Bill Five to accelerate economic growth and, at the same time, environmental stewardship. You also made mention in your deputation about your partnerships with the First Nations you have locally. So my question to you is, in what ways can you see that Bill Five will create jobs and drive that economic development in northern Ontario and in mining communities? Thank you.
Thank you. For Evolution Mining specifically, where this improvement would help is we are, as I mentioned, going through a major project right now on an extension on an existing tailings facility. That extension project is actually to improve our environmental performance and actually self-impose stricter regulations on effluent discharges and improving our water treatment processes and the like. That has been in works for multiple years, but that is actually held up within the permitting and approval process. So we cannot move forward with these improvements, which is, again, making us more environmentally responsible until approvals actually come through. We are doing all the work that we can in the meantime, but it will come to an unfortunate grinding halt should approvals not be obtained within a reasonable timeframe.
Yeah, continue.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to the official opposition. MPP Mamakwa.
Miguit, Chair, Miguit to Ontario Nature and also Evolution Mining for your presentation. Question to Evolution Mining. I know that you mentioned that there's 80-plus years of working in the industry, especially, I guess, in Red Lake area as well. And I also heard that you support Bill Five. One of the things that we've been hearing last few days with the presentations from others that Bill Five is a very colonial bill and that it is yet another form of oppression to First Nations people across the country, across Ontario rather, especially in Treaty IX territory. I would like to know your thoughts and your response to this. And can you also explain your understanding of how this bill will impact treaties in Ontario? Miguit.
Thank you for your question. While I appreciate it, I do not want to speak for First Nations. I will leave the responses for them for that. For Evolution specifically, our commitment to our First Nation partners is unwavering, and that does not change. We have a very good relationship with our local First Nations that has for many decades, and that will continue, as is evident with our reaffirmed collaboration agreements with those partners. So unfortunately, I'll have to leave the First Nations answers to the First Nations though.
I believe the process on Schedule Five on one approach on how to properly engage and to do the duty consult, I would be fine with that. But the other pieces of the legislations are no good for First Nations. I ask you, would you be open to just having Schedule Five in there? And I think that's the one that you support. I'm thinking anyway, as an industry, right?
Excuse me. Thank you again. Evolution Mining is open to continuing to work with the government on finding ways to improve our current processes to ensure that we are not eroding any of our responsibilities with our First Nations or our environmental impacts. The Bill Five as proposed, for us, does appear to do that, but we are absolutely open in supporting anything that will help us to find a better way of working together and to be able to get to the end goals that we're all trying to achieve.
Okay, Miguit. Ontario Nature, Tony Morris. I was listening to the media scrum earlier today. Nisshinabaski Nation Grand Chief Alvin Fiddler shared a quote from a grade eight student in Picanticum Lake First Nation, Picanticum First Nation, who said of Bill Five that quote, "The environment is slowly dying because of these kinds of things that are going on around the world. It's not good for the earth, and it's messed up," end quote. Another student who opposed Bill Five encouraged the government to quote, "Don't think about the present generations. Think about the future generations," end quote. If this bill passes the third reading, what do you think the impacts for future generations will be, including for these grade eight students writing to us from Picanticum?
Yes, Ontario Nature also has a youth council with dozens of youth from across the province, and they express similar concerns. So it's great to see in my job that youth are engaged in this process and wanting to express, but I feel for them, their anxiety about the future. We are living in an era of climate crisis and biodiversity crisis because of actions we as a society have chosen to take. I can't imagine a world where Ontario doesn't have turtles, yet every turtle species in Ontario is currently at risk. We've lost over 70% of our wetlands in southern Ontario. Wetlands are flood mitigation powerhouses, they're biodiversity powerhouses, they're climate adaptation powerhouses. These are ecosystems we cannot lose. So I, you know, I just ask everyone in the room to basically picture an Ontario that doesn't have some iconic species that we all love, like turtles, like bats, caribou. That's the future if the Endangered Species Act is dismantled.
There is no, almost no what I'm hearing is there's no public support on this bill from the north, from First Nations. What do you think is motivating the government to continue pushing forward with this bill that so clearly violates the treaties with First Nations? And that will cause harm to Ontario's environment?
Time is up. We move to the third party, MPP Sue. You have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I wanted to start with a follow-up from MPP Mamakwa's question to Evolution Mining. And so let me just frame the question in a different way. If Schedule Nine, this is special economic zone schedule, if that were taken out of the bill, would you still support it? You know, Schedule Five is the one that's all about mining. Would you still support the bill if Schedule Nine were voted down in committee? So if we got rid of the special economic zones, but we kept the one project, one process, and all that good stuff, would you still support the bill?
Thank you very much for the question. In all honesty, I would need to look at that a little deeper. In our review, we did not look at what sections would potentially be removed if we wanted to look at it separately. So I'll be honest, I don't have an answer for that at the moment. But as previously commented, Evolution Mining is absolutely committed to finding a solution and a better path forward for all parties involved.
I want to ask a little bit more of a technical question about Schedule Five now, particularly about mining. In Section Nine of the schedule, there's language that allows the minister to revoke claims or terminate mining leases for any reason. The exact phrase used is "any prescribed factors." So at any time, the minister could say, "Sorry, you don't have a lease anymore. Your claim is revoked." And it doesn't discuss anything about compensation. And in fact, the previous section of that schedule allows the minister to bypass the Statutory Powers Procedure Act, which means you don't even have to have a hearing if these things get revoked. And I'm just worried, are you worried about you know, I think we have to take foreign investment very seriously when it comes to mining. There's a lot of capital available. Evolution Mining has global operations. I believe it's headquartered in Australia, if I'm not mistaken. And we've heard from Vale, which is from Brazil, and Glencore, which is a European-based company. So all of these new powers, which are unchecked and discretionary, don't they inject uncertainty that might make foreign investors think twice about investing in Ontario? Are you worried about that?
I would say there's an existing level of uncertainty already, which has made Ontario not as attractive for investment development as it once was, as much as Evolution would like as well, you know, global mining companies. We are always looking for our next opportunity for investment. And in the current state of legislation, the permitting regime and world that we live in within Ontario has made Ontario honestly not very attractive for investment. So any changes that will help to deburden that process?
Like the one-window?
Yes, very much so.
Part of Schedule Five?
Yes.
But maybe not the unchecked discretionary powers that any future government will have, that you don't know what they're going to do?
This is always true.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Morris, so the way Bill Five is written, you could exempt a project or a proponent from, say, the Clean Water Act or the Safe Drinking Water Act. And this is legislation that... And these are some of the, this is legislation that tries to be careful about protecting, like drinking water, what everybody needs. So not, moving a little bit away from nature and the environment, but wouldn't you, I'll let you sort of answer the question more broadly, but wouldn't you want to say in Bill Five that we won't try to exempt you from the Clean Water Act or the Safe Drinking Water Act? I mean, aren't those, isn't that reasonable to do?
Yeah, I think that's, you know, the Special Economic Zones Act portion of the bill, and that is the most concerning, is that there's no criteria in terms of how those special economic zones will be determined. It's entirely discretionary up the cabinet. And, you know, we've seen patterns with ministerial zoning orders, the Green Belt, Ontario Place, projects that don't really pass due diligence or that reward very specific developers. So it's perfectly reasonable that Ontarians are quite concerned with that much discretionary power. There needs to be safeguards in place, and environmental protections are not red tape.
I guess the, would it be fair to say, if we look at Schedule Nine, that even the Environmental Protection Act or the Environmental Assessment Act, even, companies could even be exempted from those things? There's no limit, is there?
No, it could be any and all provincial municipal laws.
Wouldn't Ontarians feel safer in living in a province where certain things were pretty sacred, like protecting drinking water?
I would agree, and we've seen from polling after polling that Ontarians want their government to do more to protect nature.
I think I probably only have a few more seconds, but I feel like you're about to say something when the government last questioned you, but you didn't get a chance to finish your sentence. Is there something you'd like to add there?
I think it was basically that, yeah, like it's based with the investment they're talking about, it's like bringing a water can to an inferno.
Thank you. The time is up for this round of questioning. We will start the second round with the government, MPP Cosetto.
Thank you Chair, and I want to thank the two presenters here. This question is more for Tony here. Tony, do you believe in electrification? Electrification?
Of what?
The province, the world?
The need for?
Getting off of fossil fuels?
Yes.
Okay, so when you electrify, you need minerals, correct?
Yes.
So you'd rather depend on countries like the Congo, the Russia, right? Jurisdictions in the world that do environmental damage, use child labor than use our own minerals here that we do it safely? Because you've heard from miners that come in here, "We do it safely here, we follow the rules, and we do not use child labor." So do you believe in that, or do you rather depend on the Congo?
As I said in my presentation, we believe in economic development, and we support economic development, but not at the expense of our environment, Indigenous rights, or labor laws.
And you hit on, in the environment and labor laws. We follow all those to a T here in Ontario. And I'm looking at your aluminum bottle there. Where does the aluminum from that bottle come from? Does it come from Canada or from a jurisdiction that does environmental damage?
I acknowledge we need minerals for our things, and I said, our competitive advantage is by upholding strong environmental laws.
And we do, Tony, and we do.
You're proposing to get rid of the Endangered Species Act.
And in Ontario, we do, we do. We follow all the rules here in Ontario, Tony.
The Special Economic Zones Act could basically exempt a proponent from any and all provincial laws. That's not upholding rules.
So right now, you'd rather depend on these other jurisdictions?
You're putting words into my mouth.
But that's what you're saying?
No.
Right now. Do you drive an electric car?
I don't own a vehicle.
But you do take, I figured that, that's why I asked you that question.
Can you leave the witness to answer the questions, and after then?
That's fine for me, I'll be passing it on right now, thank you.
MPP Davi.
Thank you Chair, I want to thank both presenters for being here. My question will be for Mr. Allen. I know you've laid a bit in your remarks as to the kind of, the process that you've gone through, and the competitive nature of the mining industry, and how, you know, companies will choose jurisdictions based on how effectively, how quickly they can start selling the product. So I'm wondering if you might be able to elaborate a bit in your own interpretation, how you see Bill Five streamlining regulatory processes, but still maintaining the high standard of safety, environmental protections that we certainly try to achieve in the province of Ontario?
Thank you. Yeah, for us, you know, I could look at that from two different perspectives. One is from our current operations. As I said, where we are focused on sustaining operations, but at the moment, the permitting regime that is in place is actually threatening suspension of the operations, which will have a direct economic impact in the Red Lake jurisdiction, over 1,000 people employed, the local economy, and the employment and benefits provided to the local First Nations. With not having a one-window type process, it threatens current operations. And on the other side of that, as I mentioned, it does not make Ontario attractive for us to do further investment or acquisitions of existing infrastructure to continue to improve operations. So until that regime is improved upon, we will continue to struggle with our current operations, and it makes it less attractive for further investment.
Thank you Chair, how much time is left?
Two minutes and thirty-six seconds.
Okay, thank you. And just, I would like to follow up with you, Mr. Allen. So understanding that, you mentioned the one-window approach, obviously today you don't have that, and wondering if, you know, you could speak a bit to the approach that you follow today, and how having the prospect of that mineral development advisor will effectively reduce that consultation fatigue, the different levels of government, really, having a harmonization. What will, what kind of impact will that have on your industry?
Thank you. So currently, if I take our existing, as I mentioned, we have a project that's already in the permit approval process. That singular project consists of over a dozen permit applications. Each one of those permit applications, albeit are for different aspects within that project, each one carries with it a specific consultation piece, collaboration, and it becomes even for, from, you know, when we're dealing with our local First Nations, it becomes very repetitive. We, it breaks things apart, and what it does, it does not necessarily allow us to provide a good overall view of what a true project is, what the outcome here is. Instead, it's delivered in a very small bite sizes, which may not appropriately link a project together. So bringing a one-window approach, a one-project approach, brings that together for the benefit of our collaboration with the First Nations, as well as through the permit approval process.
Okay, thank you. And Chair, just one final follow-up.
And earlier on today, we heard about the importance of creating jobs in the northern and even the southern areas of Ontario. So in what ways, you know, to you Jay, in what ways can Bill Five create jobs and drive economic development in northern and southern Ontario and in mining communities?
Thank you. Well, it creates jobs by allowing us to continue to operate. So again, without the support of a process such as Bill Five, we struggle to continue with existing operations, which threatens current employment of, as I mentioned, in our operation, over 1,000 people. We are at that stage right now, where we may be.
Thank you very much, the time is up. We move to the official opposition, MPP West.
Thank you very much Chair. Mr. Allen, I could, I'll start with you, and I hope have enough time to get to Tony as well. You talked about your Red Lake operations being around for 80-plus years, and the relationships you have with the First Nations that you're in partnership with. Who are those, like what First Nations are you in partnership with?
So for multiple decades now, we have had close relationships and agreements in place with Wabas Gang and Lakshul First Nations.
Okay, and how did that develop? I mean, 80 years ago, I don't think the presence of having these relationships was there. So what was the process? Was it the government helped you, was it internal?
While Evolution Mining was not the mine owner at the time when the agreements were originally struck, I believe that they were internal at the time with support of the government. So again, the actual agreements have been in place for decades with those local First Nations.
And then I know it's not in this bill specifically, but you think it would be helpful for, you know, more junior mining companies if the government, doesn't matter what party was in power, was instrumental in helping to form those relationships, identify the right, you know, First Nations or treaty rate holders to communicate with?
What we've been finding ourselves, as we actually continue to attempt to build new relationships with additional First Nations, is government overreach at times can actually be a bit of a roadblock, not necessarily supporting of it. As it becomes a bit of a gatekeeper for communications going back and forth with, between the mining companies and First Nations. Don't get me wrong, I believe that it needs to be there to establish and kick things off, but I don't think it needs to be there to be a gatekeeper, if you will, for helping to develop those.
Multiple mining companies have come to talk about being in favor of Schedule Five, but at the same time, we're hearing from First Nations treaty rate holders that they're very opposed to this bill in general, not just that schedule, although pretty much every single one of them, I think, has said, "We're not against development, it's just the way that this bill is being implemented." How do we balance that difference between the perspective of mining companies saying, you know, I think you talked about the bill's pretty good? You know, Schedule Five is about six pages of a 229-page bill, so how strong do you feel that those six pages are so important that their 223 don't have the same sort of importance? Apologize for putting words in your mouth, I'm trying not to do that.
No problem. As I said, I'm trying to be very cognizant of not speaking for First Nations myself. I can only speak for Evolution. And from us, our perspective has been dealing with our longtime First Nations partners, which we have a very good relationship with. There hasn't been, we haven't seen any opposition ourselves to it, but that's just our stance at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Tony, I have about three minutes. There was an interesting conversation earlier on the government's side, we was asking you questions, and what I was hearing in that, and maybe I misinterpreted it, was that there are countries around the world that sell products, let's say Cobalt, for example, that don't have strong labor laws, don't have child protection laws, environmental laws, the only way we can be competitive with them is if we pass a special economic zone to remove our labor laws, or child laws, or environmental laws. Is that what you heard?
I don't know if that's the position of the government, but I mean, the Special Economic Zones Act basically creates a situation where, yes, it could be a race to the bottom because there's no criteria, there's no explanation of how safeguards will still be kept in place, and the Endangered Species Act is being sacrificed under the premise that that's what's holding up economic development. And I would argue that's not the case.
I noticed you talked about that over $200,000 was donated to conservative government from the owners of the Dresden landfill. And I was, you know, the same time this morning in question period, we're asking about the Green Belt scandal, where it feels like maybe there was, well, they're being investigated by the RCMP, so there seems to be, you know, rumors of corruption in there as well. Does it feel right to you that with the special economic zones, that workplaces could feel like the best way to move the project forward is to make donations to the party?
It's quite concerning. I mean, that's, you know, we live in a world where we're seeing democracy under assault, and one of the great things about Canada and great things about Ontario is our democratic institutions. So anything that tries to undermine that, to make decisions by a select few, is quite concerning, that without public transparency.
I was wondering, for example, what kind of airplane we might get for the premier in order to open the next mine site? You mentioned a couple times, the second largest carbon sink in the world is around the Ring of Fire. How important is that? If, let's say we just pave over it, what's that going to do to us?
Yeah, I mean, that's the Bay Lowlands, the peatlands up there are a valuable, incredibly valuable ecosystem in our fight against climate change, as well as their benefit to biodiversity. I spoke to the amount of wetlands we've lost in southern Ontario. We need to protect habitats to ensure our climate resilience while balancing economic development. We don't do that by taking basically a carte blanche approach with no safeguards in place. It means working with Indigenous communities to identify what areas they want to protect, and working with them in partnership for economic development.
What's the outcome if we don't protect these, possibly?
The outcome for?
For, I don't know, farming land or our ability to survive climate change?
Yeah, I mean, part of the whole Green Belt and Ontario Nature is part of a coalition in the Green Belt as well, is, you know, Ontario, southern Ontario has the best farmland in Canada. Part of our national security is maintaining that farmland.
Thank you very much, the time is up. We will move to the third party, MPP Sue.
Thank you Chair. Let me start with Evolution Mining. Again, thank you for coming today. Does Evolution Mining anticipate wanting a special economic zone in an area where you operate now or potentially could operate in the future in Ontario? Is that something that you might want?
At the moment, for us, our focus has not been on seeking a special economic zone, it has been seeking just an improved process around the permitting authorizations.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Morris, you're, it sounds like you know what you're talking about. So I want to ask you a question to help me understand something better. One thing that Bill Five achieves for this government is canceling an economic assessment for a landfill in southwestern Ontario. An assessment, comprehensive economic, sorry, environmental assessment, which was promised, and now Bill Five allows them to get out of this promise. The government is countering by saying that it is providing these, it's going to go through this environmental compliance approval process to replace an environmental assessment. And it's my understanding, and I think you might be able to confirm this, it's my understanding that one difference between an environmental assessment and getting an environmental compliance approval is that in an environmental assessment, you have to look at alternatives to whatever the project is proposing. So for a landfill, it might be an alternative site. Whereas in, for an environmental compliance approval, it's just kind of a yes/no, you're getting permission to do something, you're checking if it's safe for health and the environment. Is that a fair assessment, that, is that a fair thing to say that you have to have an environmental assessment to require examining alternatives?
Yeah, an environmental assessment looks at many things. It looks at the environmental impacts, social impacts, economic impacts, requires comprehensive studies, but there's also opportunity for public, the public to have their say. Removing that ability, environmental compliance approval basically becomes an interaction between the proponent and the ministry, without that opportunity for public involvement and the level of detailed studies. For something like a landfill, they can have significant environmental impacts. This landfill in particular is very close to the Sidonham River. The Sidonham River is the most biodiverse river in Ontario. If that mine were to fail, that could, or sorry, that landfill were to fail, that potentially completely destroyed that river. I would think we would want proper study on what the proponents proposing in terms of mitigation measures for that landfill.
One thing that I'm worried about, and I, so I'm asking you whether you think this scenario, future scenario, was possible. I'm worried that in the future, in various other parts of Ontario, a government would promise a comprehensive environmental assessment in order to gain approval for some project, or at least overcome opposition, if there was an impending election or something like that. And whether all, any of the other 400 municipalities in Ontario might, should worry about the same thing, that they would get promised something by the provincial government and then have that taken away after an election or something like that? Is that, is that a realistic worry?
Well, I mean, in the case of the Dresden landfill, it was last year that the ministry ordered a comprehensive environmental assessment. That was a decision that was posted to the Environmental Registry just June of last year. So now it's saying no in Bill Five, so the community, the. community, the local concerns down there are now quite rightfully outraged of the fact that in less than a year, that decision was reversed.
The municipality of Chatham Kent has passed a motion, and it suggests that other municipalities should examine what's happening in Bill Five in terms of breaking a promise by a provincial government. My municipality of Kingston has addressed this. Would you recommend that other municipalities have a look and decide for themselves?
Yeah, we've, I've even seen numerous municipalities across the province, but that's up to those municipalities and their councils.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes the time allotted for this panel. We take a short recess, and we will reconvene back. Thank you.